To all this meeting, your order. Commissioner Marquetti.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, as we approach this meeting, we ask for your guidance. Fill our hearts with calmness and clarity. Grant us the ability to listen attentively to one another. May this meeting be productive and may we be respectful to one another. Thank you for the opportunity to contribute to the meeting and to discuss our agenda. Thank you to all those who worked to prepare for this meeting and to all of you who came here tonight. Lord, keep us safe as we journey back to our homes and families. Amen.
Commissioner Jones?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Grace.
Here.
Commissioner Northrup.
Here.
Commissioner Barrera.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yep.
Commissioner Langley.
Here.
Commissioner Marquetti.
And Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Yes, I have an addition to the agenda. Under Presentations, we have a celebrity in our midst tonight, and there will be a nice presentation. The celebrity is Belle.
Okay. All right. And I have an addition to the agenda as well. It's number six to discuss the VOC workshop, and that'll be through. Okay. Approval of the agenda as amended?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. We go into public comments, limit to three minutes, and this is for agenda items only. Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Approval of the minute of the minutes for January 23rd, 2025?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move we approve the January 2020, 23, 2025 meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, financial report?
The report's in the packet.
Okay, the financial report is in our packet, and it's also online, so for those of you who don't get the packet, you can go online and see the report there. And now, we're down to Presentations. Zack Morris is coming up to give us a Market One Quarterly Report.
Good evening.
Turn on your mic there when you... There you go.
Good evening. I'm going to hand over here essentially a summary of presentation for this evening. Well, thank you for having me this evening, and it's my first time presenting in the new Commissioner's Quarter, so it's very nice. I think the folks from Van Buren County are going to be very jealous if they ever make it down here to see this, because this is a very nice facility here, so you guys should be very proud of it, and it's great. All right, so what we want to do is just talk a little bit about what the work we're doing and what the work we're doing in Cass County. And I know there's some, again, I think we have a returning Commissioner, but we do have a new Commissioner also, Commissioner Northrup, so some of that I'll be doing, some of you've heard it, but I figure it's good to level set and doesn't hurt to say it again in some cases, but at a high level, what our purpose is at Market One as an economic development organization is to make sure we're growing strong businesses who employ talented people in vibrant communities. And around those three areas, looks like we're trying to solve maybe a technology issue.
Yeah, we didn't have our monitors on. Now we do. Keep on going, sir, please.
All right.
You're good.
So those three things center around our purpose, what we do. And we know that if you have strong businesses, you're going to employ good people, but in order to have good people in your community, you have to have places they want to live, so that's the central theme of our organization. Now, talking about strong businesses, we talk about it from a primary employer versus a secondary employer, and that's not importance, that's how capital flows. So our shop is mostly geared to support what we call primary employment. Primary employers are people who make products or services, sell them outside the area, then bring that capital back into the community. Now, think of manufacturing plants, if you look up the road here, you have CHT USA, HEDRO, companies like that, companies I know Commissioner Lawrence had worked in before. Those particular companies, they make a product, and they sell that product outside the area, and what do they do? When they bring the capital back, they pay taxes, they pay wages to people who then also pay taxes in the community, and what do they also do? They shop within the communities, and we talk about vibrant communities. Those vibrant communities are made up of secondary businesses, because they take the existing capital in the community and turn it over. So they're not secondary in importance, like I said, they're secondary in how capital flows, but if we're going to generate wealth within the community, that so that you can have a good tax base to pay for services, but also a good employment base, we need to make sure that we're taking care of our primary employers and growing them at the same time. Before the meeting, we talked about one of the companies, I mean, we think about Jesko's and Jesup's and Sunstrand, and how many other companies in Duwajak existed back in the early 90s that aren't here anymore? That's a huge tax base, that's a huge employment base that no longer is in the community. Well, our, what we're seeking to do is let's make sure that we don't have a complete loss of those things, and that's what our role is, to make sure that we grow it and keep it from losing. One of the, so one of the questions we get is, how does this work? And some time ago, we came up with this graphic to try to explain our role in the community. So you have resources on the left, these are all your resources that a business can get access to. Most of the time, most businesses have very limited knowledge on how to navigate local government, county government, state government, and all the resources that go with it. We call it the alphabet soup. Most businesses are experts in running their business, but they're not experts in accessing all these resources. So our job is to get access to all these things and then be able to help a business grow and expand. So that's how we basically work. We make these connections. Most businesses aren't going to be aware of them, they aren't going to be able to get access to them, so our job is to get access to these things and make sure our community gets access to them. I was recently meeting with someone and talking about what takes place. You have all of these resources out there that normally goes to Detroit and Grand Rapids and Lansing, and primarily because they have a lot of talented people who know how to access them. And unfortunately, rural communities who are under-resourced generally aren't able to access them. I'm biased, I'm from here, grew up here, I want to make sure our community wins in these cases. Our strategic priorities, we have four of them that have been set by our Board, and our Board of Directors are made up of some of the Commissioners here, some of the Commissioners in Van Buren County, we'll talk about that in a second, but strategic priorities, we have four of them, execute a robust business development program for the reasons I've just outlined, have an organizational sustainability and resiliency. And the reason for that is that if we're not a healthy organization, we can't, can't help other folks, so we need to make sure our organization is resilient and healthy. That means part of it is attracting good talent. New site development, and that's industrial and residential, and I believe you have a copy of our quarterly report we gave to the EDC Board, and if you take a look at it, we have a lot of buildable acres in Cass County. That doesn't mean we need to build on it, nor should we, but we should be strategic about where we select the growth of the community so that we can have a sustainable community for the next generations to come. That includes residential also in that picture, too. Community advocacy, education alignment, again, this goes back to that if we don't advocate for our community, communities who are better resourced than us will get those resources, and we will not have the money to keep up our downtowns, we will not have the money to make sure that we are winning employment opportunities for the next generation. So that's why we seek to serve to exist in what our priorities are. Our Board of Directors' representation, a little bit about that, we have representatives from nonprofits, higher education, K through 12, municipals, and S County Commissioners. And we have industry leaders, so it's not just public sector, we also have the private sector, and 50% of our Board's always going to be private sector for manufacturing, utilities, finance, hospitality, and construction. And those are the folks who set the strategies, monitor our finances, and things like that. Now, getting to some of the things we've talked about in the past, but just again, level setting with some of the new Commissioners, CHT, EQ United, HEDRO, Jasper Plastics are some of the announcements we've had. We also have another announcement for this year we'll be talking about, but these are some of the big announcements we've had since working with the community. From a grants advocacy standpoint, Cass County Internet Mapping, so this is a grant that we, we won for Cass County, $100,000 grant, that we found out, actually it was through some advocacy efforts of ours, were able to find it through IMDAR, we were able to apply on behalf of the county, and the county won $100,000 to do Internet Mapping parcel by parcel. So that was a big win. And then we have some others here, Cass County Land Bank, we helped support the Treasurer's Office in Rounds 1 and 2 with that, that was some nice wins there for the Village of Marcellus also. Also, Marcellus, we helped them with the RAP 1.0 application for $225,000. Lyons Industries, we helped them win a $25,000 MEDC grant for Industry 4.0. In Midwest Energy Communications, we helped quite a bit with winning the Maya High Robbing Grant that is wiring up almost 16,000 addresses in southwest Michigan, so we helped them with that particular effort as well. From a business development standpoint, 2024, this year, we have, we have one, one announcement, we have a few others in the pipeline, but we have 18 jobs being created down in Mason Township, and 30 jobs retained, and that's going to be about a $26 million economic impact by the time that project is finished. Since inception in Cass County, we've helped create 378 new jobs here in Cass County, 80 jobs retained, and the reason that's low is because most of these are new companies to the area. So that number's low, because we've had quite a few wins coming in, new taxpayers to the community, in other words. Capital investment, $206 million capital investment, that's, that's not only facilities, that's also equipment. And foster economic impact of 235 million. This has all been since about 2020, 2021-ish. From a community development standpoint, $30 million funded requests have come to Cass County in different ways. And we look at project announcements, Modern Buggy down in Mason Township, we talked a little bit about that one. This is one, through what you'd see in our quarterly report, we talk about all the visits we do, and we talk about the visits we go on with companies. This is a result of that. So the visits we conduct with companies in the area, you get projects that come out of it. Company says, hey, matter of fact, I'm glad you're here, we've been thinking about this expansion project for some time, but we need to help solve it. Well, let's go talk about it. What do you need? Well, we need access to more power, or we need access to capital, or we need access to permitting, or we don't need this or this piece of it. So that piece of it, we start working through, and this pipeline of projects we're working right now, five of them in Cass County, and if they all come to fruition, we would have 174 new jobs, and capital investment, almost $31 million new into Cass County. So that's almost a $50 million economic impact between the jobs and the investment in the community, if all these projects we're currently working on, behalf of these companies come through. From a, from a community development standpoint, $2.3 million is coming into Cass County through the RAP 2.0. And this looks like, and this is what it looks like, we have 48 market-rate apartments that would be put up in Duwajak. This would be down by the river, it's a great project, it's good use of the, of the property, and it would create 48 market-rate, and we are bringing to the table $809,000. This money wouldn't have came into Cass County unless you had an economic development organization writing a regional application for you. So this is part of our efforts of advocacy and education that goes into Lansing even, building relationships there. So when the folks at, so when the folks at, in Lansing see our applications, they know who we are, and then we have, we have a reputation for being successful. City of Duwajak also is going to be getting 600 and almost $640,000 to help with streetscapes to extend down to that river so that you have a nice transition. So it's great projects there in the city of Duwajak. Village of Cassopolis also winning some projects, another $809,000 going to, for the Don Horn Housing Project, that's infrastructure for more housing. So one of the big issues we talk about is workforce housing, more housing into the community, because we don't have enough of it, here's some projects we're working right now. Talking about site readiness, strategic site readiness program, SSRP, $300,000 going to MEC, and the blue dots you see on this particular screen is across the street from the existing Smart Park, but this would also allow us to start getting an understanding of this additional property they own, and this would be property that we could look at for marketing, for industrial development. And as we look at it, we also have grants pipeline, so we're also working a pipeline of grants, we have $150,000 in Cass County that would be coming in, so that's just the start of it, but doing there. Then what we're doing is we're working on a campaign right now for being able to put, what I would say, Cass and Van Buren Counties in pictures. I believe that we need to tell our story better, we need to tell a story through pictures of the assets we have. Dr. Lawless Night Sky Park, Skeet, Swiss Valley, Duwajak River, you can kayak and canoe down it. Why don't we put that in picture so people looking outside the community in know what we have, showing off some of the high-tech companies that we have also. We just looked at CHT USA recently, and what a wonderful facility that is in terms of technology investments in HEDRO. Tell the story of the communities that we have, the farms, also the downtowns, and market ourselves better, and I think we can do that. The, I don't know if I can get this video to play here, but we can give it a shot here, but this is an example of what we would look to do, and we're going to be working with some folks to fundraise for this effort so that they can also get a piece of this and put on their websites and market themselves, too. type of stuff we'd want to do. We'd want to get a bunch of firsthand footage that we can use and be, a lot of B-roll stuff, so I think we have a great story to tell and it'd be great to do it that way. So with that being said, I know we have some new Commissioners and love to be able to, you know, even the existing ones, answer any questions you may have from the quarterly report or what we've been working on, even historical.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Zack.
Yes, ma'am.
Jasper Plastics, is that a new company, or is it?
That's new.
And then where are they located?
Across from the Duwajak High School.
Okay.
If you remember, there was a, I don't know if you would remember or not, but it was a vacant building in Duwajak for some time, and they actually came to us looking in Lawrence, the Village of Lawrence, and we said, well, there's other facilities out there, because cost of expansion at the time there was very prohibitive, and this building was open, it was available, and they're open to it, so we were able to put a package together where they didn't completely move everything down to Indiana, because they were also saying, let's just pack up, move to Indiana, to Jasper, Indiana, and so we were able to say, look at other facilities. So Duwajak won, Lawrence, Van Buren County kept the business, and Duwajak, Cass County got one new one, so that's that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
That river's edge.
Yeah.
Whereabouts in Duwajak?
So you go down through the main street there, and I'm trying to think of the name.
South Front.
South Front, you go down from South Front, and I believe we're going towards the river, it goes just over, it sounds like a little poem here, over the river through the woods, but you're over the river, it's just, I believe, on the right side of the river, if, as just as you cross over, it'd be there. So the idea is the infrastructure would run down through town to extend the downtown to the river, and then you'd have departments across the street, across the river. Some old land, I guess, the city owns.
Right.
That they are cleaning up and moving out, trying to activate that space.
Right, so we're like where a fence automotive used to be.
Possibly.
Yeah, right across the street from there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, that can be like regular housing or low-cost housing?
Workforce, so it'd be a market rate, meaning whatever the market's bearing, that's what it's charging. So it would not be, would not be low-income housing. The idea is that folks that are working regular jobs in town would be able to qualify for it.
Yes, sir.
Zack, you talked about funding for the housing project there at Don Horn in Duwajak. Is that grant money, that dollar money that you helped bring in to those?
Yeah, that's, we, we worked with our municipalities to find these projects, so part of what we talk about is we need our municipalities to be the kind of the advance scouts to find these projects with, with either developers or biz, building owners or whoever, and so they find them, and then what we're able to do through the revitalization and placemaking programs, we write a regional application so that we can get a bigger sum of money to run it up to the state, and the state likes that, because if the state doesn't, let's think if they did, what would that be, six different projects, something like that? That means they have to work with six different administrators. Where they go through us, they have one administrator. So it works out pretty nice for the state, and it allows us to get extra points on the applications when we apply at the state level. So we're able to win more money, instead of it all going to Detroit, or Lansing, or Grand Rapids, the bigger communities, we can do it as a region, get it cobbled together and win those projects.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, we appreciate it very much.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Next on our list is Mary and Amanda.
Excuse me, the star is being difficult.
Taking a nap.
Thank you, everyone, for letting, giving us a minute or two to talk about this. I just want to introduce, for those who don't know, this is Amanda Smiggo. She is our office manager, she's worked for our office for a number of years, she does a tremendous job, and one of the things, one of her many jobs is, is handling, being the canine handler, and I'll introduce you to Belle, who, those who don't know Belle, she is our canine advocate. So our canine advocate goes to court with a lot of our victims, and she assists us in our, in our cases, most notably, the cases she goes to court on are cases involving children, children of abuse or have suffered some kind of trauma or some kind of sexual abuse. So she goes to, she goes to cases, or she goes to the court with the children, and when we bring a child into the court system, the last thing we want to do is re-traumatize them, so Belle helps out in that, and she assists in, you know, easing the burden and some of the emotional stress that comes from a child coming to court. So I just want to express my gratitude for both of these. Amanda, of course, is an outstanding handler, and what she does is, although Belle is a good girl, Belle is a dog, and she needs lots of direction in court, so Amanda makes sure that Belle stays where she's supposed to be, which is in the witness stand, she's supposed to not be heard or seen from jurors, so she has to be very quiet and tucked away by the children's feet most usually, and that's what Amanda does, is she makes sure that Belle follows the direction and she stays quiet and behaves. So again, I just thank you for giving us this opportunity. What you're going to see is a local PBS channel did a highlight video on Belle and basically therapy dogs for courts.
It's going to the prosecutor's office?
Good morning, Amanda and Belle, or good afternoon. Hi, Belle.
This is Belle, and she is our canine advocate.
Belle is a golden retriever, and she's been with the office, actually longer than I have, she's been with the office, I think, about six years.
Canine advocacy is, it's a program that's fairly new in the state of Michigan, I'd say it's probably about 10 to 15 years old, and it's an opportunity, when we have victims of crime, particularly younger kids or individuals with disabilities, to provide them with really a protection when it comes to testifying on the stand.
When you have children and families who have experienced trauma, which most of these kids have, then having a dog that's already trained and able to be that calming influence for them, but be there as a support, is huge, because then they don't feel so alone. We're expecting children as young as two and three years old sometimes to go testify.
You know, it, I've seen it happen on many occasions, we'll be in our conference room with a, you know, sometimes it's a child who has suffered some of the most terrible things you can imagine that a kid would have to go through, and that the youngster doesn't want to talk about what happened, their, their head is down, they're reluctant to, to speak, but when Belle's introduced, you just see an energy, they light up.
Come here, Belle. I'm very proud of you. How are you? How are you?
And they can just sit down and hug Belle, pet Belle. It, it helps alleviate their fears, and the same in the courtroom. She started with Leader Dogs for the Blind. These dogs have gone through all of the Leader Dog trainings, they've been puppy-raised, they've done all of that.
You know, there's a few dogs that are excellent, but they've got a slight flaw, such as Belle, and I recall, I think with Belle, it was a little bit that she was just a little bit too nervous in traffic situations and so forth, and you've got to have that when you're, you know, providing assistance to, to the blind, but their loss was our gain.
We have an agreement with Leader Dogs to make them canine advocates. What that then means is we pair them with somebody from a prosecutor's office or Child Advocacy Center to be able to adopt the dogs. As soon as this goes on, she knows it's work time. At work, she's calm, you don't even know she's here. At home, it's pretty much a 180 difference. She's hyper, she likes to play, she's, I have another lab, and they're best friends, and they just run around. Totally different dog. The thing that makes canine advocates different is the fact that they are so specially trained. One of the things and tests they have to go through to work at a prosecutor's office is they have to be able to sit in the witness stand for an hour without moving.
It just is amazing how calm that she is, you know, and the training that these dogs get, it's second to none.
Belle's incredibly patient and gentle, she's very tolerant of things, she doesn't get distracted easily, so, you know, if she's sitting with a victim, she's not going to obviously bark or make noise. There are 35 dogs that are placed throughout Michigan at prosecutors' offices or children's advocacy centers. They range all the way from the UP, pretty much all the way around the state. There really isn't an area of the state that we don't at least have one dog somewhere, and we are hoping at some point to maybe be able to take this as a program that we can expand nationally.
When the Oxford shooting happened, which is obviously a terrible tragedy here in the state of Michigan, Amanda came in and said, you know, that they needed some of the canine advocates over on the east side of the state, and she asked if, you know, if that would be something that I would allow, and without hesitation, so we sent Belle over with, with Amanda, and I know that they assisted for several days for that, you know, really terrible tragedy.
You could tell that it helped tremendously with those students that had to return. The connection that, you know, sometimes people suffering from PTSD can't connect at that moment with other people, it's maybe too much or too stressful, but for some reason, that barrier can be easily broken down when an animal, especially someone as gentle, you know, and sweet, comes into the room and non-assuming, and you can just see people's demeanors change, kind of takes maybe the focus off of like the harshness or the, the reality of their situation at the moment. To have these dogs be able to have a purpose, and that purpose be to help these kids, is tremendous, and to see the joy on these kids' faces, to see them calm down immediately when they're with a dog, dogs just have that something. And when you see a child who sees that dog, it's really gratifying, and to be able to have that happen all over the place, I'd ideally like to see it at every prosecutor's office and every children's advocacy center. You know, Belle is great for us, too, I mean, her purpose is not to reduce our stress, but I think she does, you know, sometimes just having a dog around in the office kind of gets the focus off the- the heavy, you know, loads that people carry around in their work, and in particular, sometimes in a prosecutor's office, so it's great having her around. She's not here every day, but everyone lights up when they see Belle. So when she comes through the door, I always say to Amanda, she gets more hellos than, than, than the rest of us do when she comes in the doors, because everyone loves her.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick question, how old is Belle?
Seven.
Seven.
How much longer can she be in service?
A lot longer than police can, until she, since.
I just want to say it was a very touching video, very informative. I'm glad that we have a resource available to our community, and just thank you guys for the work that you do and, and for you being the handler. She seems like a lovely dog, and I'm sure she does do a great job at what she does.
Yes, tremendously valuable for us.
Anyone else, any other questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Unfinished business. No unfinished business, we'll go into new business. Number one on the docket is human resources update on earned sick time legislation, Beth.
Yep. So the Earned Sick Time Act, referred to as ESTA, goes into effect tomorrow, February 21st. What it essentially means is that any employer that has 10 or more employees, which we, as the county, do, allow employees to use up to 72 hours of sick, paid sick leave annually, and employees earn the leave at one-hour increments for every 30 hours that they work. So what we did, there's a lot more, obviously, to this, but what I want to capture tonight is just the overview of how this is going to impact us here at the county. So first, we identified the employees that are going to be impacted by this. And basically, it's going to be our non-union employees, because all of the union employees, full-time and part-time, that are currently under collective bargaining agreements, that collective bargaining agreement overrides the ESTA. So until those contracts expire, they overrule ESTA. So at this point, that's why our union employees aren't going to be impacted at this point in time. So the non-union employees are the ones that we're going to have to look at to meet compliance issues. So in order to meet the compliance, one, we have to post the restrictions, or I should say, post the ruling, and we've already done that. So each of the buildings has, the required labor laws posted here at this building, at the courthouse, and at the sheriff's office. We also have the required information on our internet, the WeAreCastCounty site that all employees have access to. So those items have been completed. We will be, I sent an email out to all the elected officials earlier this afternoon to let them know that I would be discussing this tonight at the meeting. We haven't gotten into the, the conversation in depth because there's been ongoing legislation that has been constantly changing. We didn't know if this is, technically, we still don't know if this is going to go into effect yet tomorrow. As of right now, it is scheduled to go into effect. There was information last week that the governor was potentially going to extend the effective date until July 1st, to allow more time for the Senate and the House to agree. Right now, the Senate has not passed, but it's on the floor, some, some proposed amendments to the existing law that's been scheduled to go into effect. The House has already passed its recommendation for the amendments, the proposed amendments, and now we're going to be waiting for, once the Senate passes then that bipartisan support, to determine whether or not they are going to implement changes. But in the meantime, we have to go forward with what we know is in effect. So with that being said, items that we're going to be reviewing, we will be, employers need to review, and if necessary, revise any of their existing sick leave policies to align with ESTA requirements. This includes ensuring that policies meet or exceed the minimum accrual rates and the usage cap stipulated by the act. With the pending House and Senate bill amendments, the county, as I indicated previously, was waiting for clarification before having to make multiple policy revisions. So now that we are at the 11th hour, we will start to review those and make sure that we are meeting all of the mandated requirements. So next week, we will be meeting with the elected officials to start discussing our policies and to review any possible modifications that are needed. An email will go out to the department heads and the non-union employees tomorrow also to let them know that this law is in effect, and that the posting information is available in each of the buildings and on our, and on our website, so they can be informed of what their rights as employees are as well. So that's, I guess, where we are, and depending on how things go next week after our meeting with the elected officials and reviewing all of our policies, we will be then bringing anything to the board that potentially needs to be updated or changed. I guess one other, just caveat to mention to this, is we are, so with the requirements of the 72 hours that employees are eligible to use annually, we have ETO, earned time off, that we provide to our employees in a leave bank of 84 hours annually, so we are exceeding that minimum requirement. So as of right now, we're sort of looking at combining this earned time off with the ESTA because they're so similarly aligned in the respect of the amount of time that employees are awarded. What we will have to look at is some of the other provisions that are different than our current ETO policy, and we'll be reviewing that information. Does anybody have any questions?
So this is all mandated by the state, there's nothing that we're doing?
Correct.
There's nothing our policy committee or anything is doing, it's all?
It's mandated by the state, and then it's up to us to figure out how to?
How to implement it.
To implement it and comply with it.
And you're going to check with all the employers of the county?
Yep, meeting with co-employers next week.
And then what's our position as county commissioners, once you all come up to? It's not really an agreement you all are coming up to, is it, or?
Well, it'll be a review of how we're currently set up, and then what do we need to look at doing in order to meet the requirements? There's going to be record-keeping requirements, there's going to be some rollover provisions that have to be included that are somewhat different than our policy now. So once we meet and talk about that, then we can figure out, you know, a way forward on how we will meet those compliance issues.
Anything else? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Chair, I've moved that, we moved this, number one, to the business meeting? We don't have to do that? It's just an update? Okay, you're right, yeah, yeah. Sorry.
That's all right. Okay, emergency home repair program, Hope, are you here, or?
I can talk on it, too. So with the CDBG program, previously, it was administered by the city of Duwodjek. They've pulled that back. Just a huge thank you to Treasurer Anderson for, she thought that this kind of went along with some of the things that she's already been doing in her office, and since things have slowed down a little bit, and this program means so much to the county, she was willing to help out with that. Before Matt had left, he had reached out because depending on, because this is for, basically helping, depending on income levels, you can get different things for upgrades on the house. I don't have all the specifics, but for emergency needs. Depending on the amount, sometimes there was a lien put because it was a no-interest loan. If it got to be a certain amount for that repair, there was a lien put on the house. If it was a smaller amount, it was just granted, and there wasn't a lien put on the house. There's been a lot of issues where people haven't wanted to use this program because of that lien component to it, even though it was a 0% interest loan. So Matt had reached out to the state and got them to agree that, according to what the state shows, that we could grant those funds rather than putting liens on homes for those repairs. So basically, the changes that we're requesting to these guidelines is basically changing it so that there's no more liens, that this money is granted to them, and then they can get those repairs done without that lien on their home.
Questions?
I, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I also would like to thank Hope, because there was a time when we did do the CDBG, and I'm very happy that we are doing it again.
Yes.
I make, want to make sure that the board does understand that the program is fed through those liens. So we are essentially, even though I do totally agree with this move, we are eliminating this program eventually, because as people pay off those liens, that's what fed this program to, to be able to do more homes each year. So we are essentially going to eliminate it eventually. But it, the amount, anything over $4,099 required a lien. You really can't do ma, much home renovation for under $5,000. So it, it was a big, a big problem for a lot of homeowners who needed emergency repairs, but were not willing to participate in the lien, or didn't want to agree to a lien. So, and of course, my office has successfully administered the MyHope Grant Program. That was $975,000 in home renovations, so I feel confident that we could administer this. It's somewhere around $80,000, $90,000.
Yeah, this year, that's about the money. So basically, every year, whatever money comes in, anything over $35,000, you need to roll back into the program. So as people come out in and pay these liens off, that money comes in. You accumulate all that money, you tell the state, I had this much, and then you have the following year to spend that money, or send it back to the state. And so that's how it kind of becomes this revolving thing, is people are paying off liens, it helps put more in there. But oftentimes, what we were seeing is people weren't paying off these loans. It more came up when those individuals would pass away, and someone might go to sell a home, and they're like, this lien pops up that no one knew anything about, those family members didn't know anything about, and it would really, really make some big impacts and, and really kind of shake them up and caused a lot of uncomfortable conversations as they're going through a grieving time, too. We really weren't seeing people paying them back just ahead of time because it was 0% interest.
Any questions? Mr. Vice Chair, Hope, when you talk about liens on homes, you know, is there homes right now that we, is in this program that's got liens on it?
Yes.
Do you know how many?
The county does. This is a county program, well, it wasn't the treasurer's program, but the county does have a, a list and has a files of that.
Quite a few homes, though, do you, quite a few homes?
I think it's quite a few. And it, yeah, it started back in the 90s. So yes, there's quite a few.
And the lien never goes off?
That is correct.
Well, the lien is discharged once it's paid off. I'm sorry to interrupt, they're all recorded in my office. And so the county puts a lien on the homeowner's property, just like a mortgage. And then, once it's paid off, then the county records a discharge, and, and that way, it's, it's free and clear of the lien. But there are quite a few liens out there, CDBG liens.
Thank you, thank you.
I do have a slight concern that this award to the, to the city of Duwodjek was like June, July, maybe, July timeframe. It has to be spent by June of this year. So they've done nothing up until this point. So I've now, I'm down to just a few months to, for you guys to approve this grant, the policy change, and to administer this work. So it's a, it is a very short timeframe, but we will do our best to spend every penny of it on homeowners in our county.
That's the recommendation that we move this forward and approve it?
Yes.
That's the recommendation from the county and the treasurer's office.
Yes, thank you.
I moved that, we moved this item forward to the business meeting.
A second.
Second, we have a movement in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And the next, number three, a request to approve the computer system and software license sales agreement with Fiddler Technologies for Clerk and Register of Deeds Software, Monica.
Thank you. I am excited that after about a year and a half working on this project, we're finally at the point where we are ready to move forward. In my office, we are clerk and register. We have had the same software since 2006, which is when I joined the clerk's office. Prior to that, they used books and typed cards by hand. So this is the first digital software that we've had. It worked well for a while, however, the current company we used got very big and has not been able to keep up with support. We've had a lot of instances where we waited a month or longer for service. That's not as bad as another county in the state of Michigan, I'm sure Jody knows. They got hit with a cyber attack really bad. It was before the November election, so it's almost three months now. They got all of their data back, other than Register of Deeds, and they used the same company, and this company told them they have not had time to get them back up and running. So their deeds office has not been able to record or provide title searches. If you Google "what's going on," you will see it. They're getting their senators and representatives involved, it's really, really bad. So I would like to move away from the software before anything like that happens here. The software that we're moving to is absolutely wonderful, we're very excited. I can proudly say that our IT department has vetted it and met with the company and is comfortable. And the really nice thing is, it's going to be less money than what we're paying now, and we're going to get so many more features. One of the main features, we get calls on every day, is a property fraud alert. So you can sign up, any constituent can sign up online for free to receive an email or a text message if any document is recorded in my office with your name. Yeah, I'm sure you've heard from constituents, it's really big right now. So the current company wants to charge us an arm and a leg for that, and the new company will offer it for free. So, and the other good thing is that we have restricted funds, so I need no money from the general fund, I just need your approval to move forward.
Mr. Chair, I move we move forward with the purchase of software for the clerk's office.
Second.
And I have a movement in a second. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, just regarding that specific new ability to be able to look at those title searches, is that something, if we move forward with this, implement it in the future, will we be able then to let the public know that that's a feature that's now available?
Yes, I am anxiously awaiting, and actually, the company has offered to work with IT to see if we can do something with our current software, so we can offer it sooner rather than waiting six months until the new software goes into place. And I'm very grateful that our IT is willing to work with the company on this. So yes, we will spread that news far and wide.
Thank you.
Mike? Monica, you said this is cheaper than the system you're using now, by how much you know?
Not a ton, by like five or six grand, but the fact that we're getting more services is huge. So more for, for less money.
Okay, thank you. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we go to resolution with Michigan Department of Transportation, Clint? Clint?
So this is a resolution required by the Michigan Department of Transportation for us to be able to put flock camera systems up along a state highway in the right-of-way that belongs to the state. It's a standard agreement that they do with all the counties to be able to put them up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move we move forward with the resolution for the Michigan Department of Transportation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Sheriff, how many cameras are you planning to put around the county, you know?
So currently there is 11, or I'm sorry, 12 in the county right now and there'll be two more added to that once this resolution passes and the company gets able to put them up. So there'll be 14 total, well, actually 15 because state police put one up in the county also.
Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sheriff, if you want to stay there and the purchase of the vehicles?
Okay. So pretty straightforward, asking for three patrol vehicles and three administrative vehicles and I'll explain the administrative vehicles. Historically, the sheriff, the undersheriff and the captain of the road drove just a standard car, had no markings, had no lights, had nothing in it. That's been about 32 years now that's been happening. By going to a non-pursuit rated Explorer, which will match our fleet, with a low set of lighting in it, it will allow us, when myself or the undersheriff or the captain show up on a scene, like a fatality on a highway or roadway where we actually shut the road down for three or four hours while we investigate it, typically we have to take our patrol cars and put them at the end of the road to block it off, which takes those deputies out of the patrol for the rest of the county. By going to this, we can use our cars when we arrive on scene because we will go to any fatality or major crime scene. We can use our cars to block those intersections and allow our patrol to be back out in the county doing what they should be doing.
Any questions?
State purchase, right?
Yep, state purchasing.
Yep. Thank you.
Motion to move this forward?
Second.
Mr. Chair, I move we move this purchase forward to the regular meeting.
Okay. And second, we have a motion and a second to move this forward. Any questions? If not, we do a roll call on this.
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're down to public comment. Oh, I forgot that one. I'm sorry.
That's what I'm here for. You got glasses on too.
All right. Number six, we have to discuss the VOC workshop. Jen?
Sure. I had put it in my last update that I wanted to look at doing a VOC workshop with you guys. It's pretty standard to do, about two a year. I just wanted to see if we could nail down a date that would be good for everyone. Usually it's an all-day event. We spend a lot of time together and then also if there's any topics that people were interested in. One that I wanted to mention, Clerk Register McMichael just did a fabulous training with her clerks on open meetings acts and she could probably speak a little bit more. It was wonderful. I got to attend the very end of it. It was wonderful. I was learning things and knowing that there's several new commissioners or maybe some of you haven't had a chance to go through some of that, I thought that might be a really good topic that we could cover at it. Always willing to take suggestions if anyone has any other ideas, but it would be nice if we could get down a date so we can start planning for that workshop.
Do you have any dates in mind right now or...
No, I'm pretty open. I didn't know what you guys' schedule looked like, probably about a month out, just to get it all scheduled and everything set up. And then depending on what we want, if you guys were interested in that training from MSU, I could reach out to them and see what dates they might have available or if you guys pick a few dates, I could see if one of those would work for them.
Where are we going to host it at? Here or the Low Foundation?
So previously, we've done it off-site. I think we have a beautiful facility. I think the training turned out wonderful. I, I think it would be wonderful if we could do it in here, but I'm, I'm open to what you guys think.
Yeah, I agree. Be nice to do it here.
Probably, I think that, because the easiest thing, what we've been doing, the schedule is to have Ambrosia send out that, like the notice and see, or is that, are we going to decide right now what the date's going to be?
We don't have, do we have to decide now or...
You don't have to decide today if you guys want to talk, you know, individually, one by one and just say, or, I mean, just send dates that, we can do it any way you want. I just wanted us to start thinking about it so we can start planning it in the near future.
So you can send us the dates of the MSU?
So I can start there if you guys are interested in the MSU presentation. I can see what dates they might have available and then get back to you guys at the next meeting if you'd like.
Yep.
And that would give us some more time to come up with topics also.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions? Now, I can go into public comments right?
You got glasses on.
Oh, boy. And as we go down to M, public comment, limit three minutes per person. Any public comments?
I just wanted to report that the ADHAC committee met today on the administrator hiring and that was a public meeting, but some of you weren't there, so I just wanted to give you an update. Good progress is being made on getting the job posting ready to go so that we can get it posted and we'll bring more news. We're planning to meet again next week so that we can hopefully have something to bring to you all as far as a hiring process at the Board of Commissioners meeting, the next business meeting. So I just wanted to let you know, a lot of people are working hard on that and the committee is making good progress. So we really appreciate everybody pulling together because that's a priority to have a process that's, you know, straightforward and transparent so that anyone that is interested in applying can and then we go from there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? If not, we'll close public comment, no closed session. Board member comments? Any board member comments? All right, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.